Good evening. My name is Kathy Stanley Galvin, Mayor of the Town of Stoneville. On behalf of the Town of Stoneville, we thank you for joining us this evening. At this time please silence or put off your cell phone. As Mayor, I call this meeting to order on Tuesday at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, July 1st. Let us stand for the pledge and follow the pledge. Mayor Protem Thornton will lead us in prayer. Michael, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, thank you that your Spirit may empower each of us to overcome our blindness and our weakness so that you might be greater, that we might be a greater service to you and our town. We stand before you in humility, but yet in confidence that we seek your continuous guidance in the matters of our small town and community. Guide each one of us that we clearly may see your mission for our time in town. In this we pray, long the ways come.
Thank you. So we make a motion to approve the agenda. There will be an amendment to add item number six under new business. This is to consider approval of a budget amendment for the fire inspections and to consider approval of the inter-local agreement following Rockingham County to perform fire inspections for the Town of Stoneville. With that said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Thornton, a second from Councilman Shelton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for this evening?
So moved.
Or the minutes from prior, which would have been June 3rd? So we have a motion from?
Johnny.
Johnny, okay. We have a motion from Councilman Farmer, a second.
Seconds.
Councilman Mayor Protem Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go ahead and start with the recognition of firefighter Joe Harrison. And this will be, Mr. Joel Freeman present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to recognize our volunteer fireman, Joe Harrison. He came to us, he didn't have his firefighter certification. He inquired about obtaining it in order to go into a structure to fight fire. You have to have a North Carolina certification. This certification is well over 400 hours of volunteer time back and forth to a school. So I would just like you all to acknowledge and know that Joe Harrison put the time in and became a certified firefighter for us. And I just wanted to know, you all to know that. So I'd just like to rec-
Thank you.
Recognize Joe.
Thank you. Joe, thank you and thank you for choosing Stoneville. We appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we're going to go to new business and consideration to adopt ordinance zero dash two oh two five dash oh two. This amendment to Town of Stoneville Code for Ordinance is Chapter 91. It's Fire Prevention and Protection, Section 91 point over Fire Prevention Code.
So yes, Council, the item number one and item number two actually go together. This was the inclusion of the creation of an ordinance to allow us to follow the North Carolina Fire Code as well as develop a policy for our fire inspectors per the recent approval of local fire inspection inside the town. After a conversation today with a meeting with our Fire Marshal, there are several items within these, the ordinance and policy that she recommended changing. And then she went through some other outlines of some things that the town would need to do in order to be prepared to make this. So at this time, my recommendation is that we take no action on these two items and instead reference item number six, which will address these issues.
So that covered item number one and number two.
Yes, ma'am.
And number six. Number three is animal ordinance. And this is complaints and--
Yes, Council, again, this is more for your information. We currently adopted the Rockingham County Animal Ordinance and Guidance in terms of enforcement, ensuring leash laws, et cetera, are followed. And we have received at the Town Hall several complaints of animals being off-leash in areas where they should not be, the park, et cetera, as well as some issues with owners of animals allowing their animals to defecate in places that are public places. And the ordinance clearly states what the rules and regulations are regarding that. And so this is to make the council aware and just make it public again to our citizens that this ordinance does support the idea of fines and enforcement should they be documented. And that's important that we have documentation from the complainants stating that there is, there is awareness that this is going on, whether that be in the form of a picture or something to indicate. And then, once that occurs, we would turn that over to our animal control officer where he can actually issue fines, starting with first offense all the way up. So this is more of just to make you aware, and if you have questions, we can answer regarding these issues.
Can we put that on our face we paint to make sure it is, only I'm sure it is, can we do make a little special notice about what the animal control laws are that way?
Yes.
Make it available instead of having to go through our code the way of the climate?
Right.
Make accessible, accessible to them. What I would do, suggesting is anytime we get a complaint or something, if it's through an email or whatever, get some type of information, then we can email them a copy of that ordinance and they have the information.
I also suggest, could, what about getting the little, the little things that stand up where you can have the bags that would encourage maybe people, folks that don't have them when that happens?
And we've had that discussion, in particular for the parks, which would be the ideal place to have, you know, in discussion, we're not exactly sure in downtown where you would want those items because you wouldn't want them necessarily placed next to a restaurant. And the park areas, I don't think they would want them there, when I'm talking about the two pocket park areas. So I'm not sure, I mean, that is always open for discussion if that's what the council wishes for us to do, to have those. But again, I think from an aesthetic, to have that stuck in the middle of the memorial park or the pocket park may not be what our citizens will want to see.
Right.
But we will entertain that and can work towards those. We have priced some of those out for the, for the park itself, trying to get some of those there, so it would be no different than that.
Yes, sir.
And if I may add, we're not the Parks Recreation Director. We put those in a lot of places, but the manager is correct, the administrator is correct, they were placed in the parks, along the walking trails, access areas and things like that. They were very seldom put downtown there because there's really, you don't see a lot of dogs walk, walking downtown. Most time, those folks that are walking the dog, they're only carrying their, something little to pick up there. So I think it would be great to have them at the park. So I go by there a couple times a week and there, get a rail on down there and maybe if we ever do anything with the parks, like potential parks like that beside the post office, then that would probably be a good location to have something there also.
Right.
Okay. So we're good on that one? No action taken. Next is a consideration to approve contractor quote for the Fidelity Bank Building project.
Ma'am, may I speak to that, please?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the Mayor and the Council if we could table this item number four for further information and discussion into the August meeting next month.
As I shared in the agenda item, when we went through the grant writing process, one of the things that they did require is that we had a bidding process, informal as it was, and I know that the, the council always requests three, just so that the public is aware, we did have three individuals coming in to quote out a price, but one of those individuals did not follow through. So as a result of that, and that's why I put this item in there as information primarily only, I mean, if the, if the council wants to consider that. Otherwise, we will go back to our commercial contractors, go through the list and try to find additional contractors who would be interested in placing a bid. I'm not opposed to that because we do want to get this project correct and meet the compliance of the grant requirement, so.
I don't have a problem with it being tabled. Because I have some questions too, because there was a, a big price difference between 108.9 and 113, and I'm really, I know you said that there was some things that he would subcontract out and everything, but they really were not put down by number, so.
Right.
I think if we could get something apples for apples, I think it'd be a lot easier for us to do that.
Right. And what I envision is, is getting the whole scope of the project and outlining, these are the items that we want you to price. Whereas you like, and both, both of the bids that were provided were very general. And again, that was intent primarily for grant purposes so that we knew how to budget the money within the grant application.
And when you're saying that, just from past experience with bids coming in, I think that's what we've gotten a lot here, is just generalized terms.
Right.
I think what we need to do is put a bid package together and identify what we need for each bid or whichever item it is so that we get an apple for apple of consideration. So it's easier for us to pick somebody, because I think in the past, it's not always been that one.
Right.
I think you made something else to say.
I think Mr. Farmer covered it pretty well.
So what you're saying is table it, but if you want to table it, is there anything that we need to get Mr. Sands to be working on now?
Well--
To have it ready for August?
No, go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
Go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think one of the concerns that I have, and maybe some other townspeople might have, I'd kind of like to see a visualization of what it's going to look like, you know, the aesthetic appearance from the outside, as well as what they're doing on the interior of the building. I know there's a lot of infrastructure they're going to have to do and change up and fix, but aesthetically pleasing to the town. And I'd kind of like to see what those architectural renditions are. One of these quotes had architectural quotes in it and the other one did not. And so I don't know how you can really judge what we're doing without seeing what we're doing.
And I think primarily that one was more of the interior proposal of the removal of some of the walls and addition of additional offices in there. And so that's what they were looking at, more of an engineering architectural design rather than what the aesthetics of the outside of the building will look like. What I'm hearing from you is that you're looking more from what the building will do from an appearance standpoint along the road. I mean, we can work towards that, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, I would have to work with some others who would have that expertise because that's not in my area, but.
Well, it's just a concern, you know?
Right.
I think, I'd even like to see the plans as to what's going to happen on the inside because it looked like on that lower bid, there was a lot of work orders that might be getting changed and some additional contractors coming in. And I don't think that was a real number of what we were looking at.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So what I'm, so what I'm hearing from the council is then get a very itemized, very specific detail on what we're looking for, the different projects within the project itself, the smaller projects, and then having each one of those bid or line item out so that we knew exactly what the total cost would be. And that way, we can have a apples for apples comparison about what they're saying is going to be the total project.
Is everyone good?
And I guess the only thing that I would ask Town Administrator to do, I know this grant is working with the folks that may be coming here, you might be able to get with them to find out what their idea of what the outside is going to look like, and that way, somebody could do something real, do a brief conceptual drawing of what the outside is going to look like, you know what I'm saying? And that doesn't have to be anything that's a major cost or something like that.
Right.
But I think it's up to the folks, whoever's going to be utilizing the building, would leave, would help decide how that's going to look.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Next is number five, budget amendments.
So this budget amendment that is before you is, for better choice words, the words I use is carryover from individual grants that are, or other line items that were specific. And so I asked Shannon just to make sure that I understood the process because I am used to, in the school system, we did a line for line when we did transfers. So if it was already designated for a structure, then we simply moved it to a line item structure. My understanding is, in local government, what you see is any carryover goes into the general and then has to be reallocated to those line items. And again, having not been in the budget process for local government, that was my understanding. So what you're seeing here is these increases is simply moving the amount that was left over in each one of these grants to a specific line item now designated again, just like it was from the previous budget.
Well, I have several questions. I'm not sure that I agree with what you just said because when you carry things over, that carryover should have been part of the original budget. These numbers, if we knew this is what we had, that should have been part of the original budget that you presented to us. And you, and if you said you were going to use fund balance, then you would have used fund balance in that original budget. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
And I'm looking at one right now that's on here for $21,018.89. Is that for those police radios that we're supposed to be getting?
They are.
And if you remember, those dollars, we, we did an amendment last Friday to amend last year's budget to cover that. So that amendment doesn't even need to be in here because those dollars are coming out of last year's budget. So that amendment is not going to even be in there. We're not going to even be taking money for that.
Right. And so, and again, someone will have to correct me, because my understanding is, even though we did a transfer so that it was in compliance with the encumbered funds that we had a PO for, when it trips over, if you will, to July 1st, that it automatically goes back into the general fund. And then on July 1, that we have to then put it back in this line item again.
I do not think that's correct. Because what happens with your audit at the end of your fiscal, and you can correct me, Mr. Russell, anybody can correct me, and if I'd done it, I did it wrong for 40 years. When you have spending or bills that were encumbered during, say, '24, '25, when you pay that out, it's going to be paid out in '25, '26, that's when the auditors come in and that's when they will tell you that money comes out of that budget and everything. You'll write the check out of that, but you have to show that the money come out of last year's budget. So you don't put money in this coming year's budget to pay for it. The auditors will know that those dollars are coming out. I explain to myself pretty right, Mr. Russell.
Well, I think that it does have to be, it does have to be carried over. And it's, you know, the funds that you are unexpended, if you don't spend $40,000 for radios, then that's during the budget year, then you need to, it technically does go into general fund and then it's placed into your budget for the current year. So I do think this transfer does need to take place.
The one for the police radio too?
Well, what, all of these here, yes, because the funds weren't expended.
But what I'm saying, that they're not carrying anything over, they're taking money out of fund balance, and we are not going to know how much fund balance we got from this fiscal year until the auditor is through with the audit.
Well, that will all have to be sorted out, but you basically, you can't spend last year's money after what I want. It has to be in the budget. So I do think you need a carryover here. I'm not completely familiar with what all these entries are, whether they include radios or what they include, but that's big police department equipment. So you, that's, you do have to have a budget amendment to carry some of that. And we did disagree on that.
And I think the only one that it truly is a carryover from an expenditure that was PO'd in one year and moving over is the PD equipment. The others are carryover grants where departments, and I think Chief Dixon and Chief Freeman may can be able to speak to that. But many times, these particular grants, after doing some research, these particular grants are not date-specific. I know you and I are used to more of the grants that say after this timeline, it expired and sent back, but I don't think these particular ones are. And so as a result, they're able to accumulate, if you will, multiple years' worth of grant funds when they need bigger projects. So it's almost like they're building a savings account because they know a bigger project is coming up. And I don't know if Chief Freeman or Chief Dixon, either one will want to speak on that behalf. But that's, that's the only one that I'm aware of that council kind of drives is the core grant. And that's something that you designate as council where you want those funds to go.
So, well, I guess my question is, when we, when we apply for a McMichael grant, do we not tell them what we're going to spend the money on?
Yes, yes.
So, so my thing is, why don't we spend that money on in the year that we get it? Why, why we not spending the money? Why do we have to keep waiting year after year after year to get stuff?
And again, I would--
We spent money on what's for that wouldn't give.
Right, okay. So while we carrying over from McMichael Foundation Fire Department grant this, for this year, we're carrying over 27,000?
We had 70,000 when I first joined.
Right.
I've spent money over the years, I got it down to near 40 some. So I'm spending money on larger items that the town does not support the fire department on to spend from bad grant money. When I fill the grants out, there's no timetable, there's a fee that you got to spend this money within 12 months.
So, but, but when you, when you, say, if you applied for a new McMichael grant, say--
Which I have.
And what did you say you were going to spend it on?
More equipment that we don't need.
You didn't specify what type of equipment or anything?
Yes, I did. Rescue equipment, I have a copy of it.
Yes. No, but what I'm saying is, why don't we, once we get the grant, why don't we go ahead and get that stuff?
We do.
You get it right as soon as you get the money?
Yes, when I get approved, I get with Shannon, and I get the invoice, and it's paid and it's sorted.
Well, I just don't understand why we got, got 27,000 left and in PD, we got 38,000.
And that 38 was intended and marked for the IT contract--
Right.
That we've been working heavily with VC3. We're trying to iron that out. I think we're, we're at a point now where soon, if not very soon, that will be completely wiped clear.
Okay. And my next question, this special fire tax money, do we get, how much do we get?
That came from the town, that we had to--
That leftover?
Now you told us that we had to take it out of their budget--
And put it in our budget?
And put it in our funding. And again, there was no timetable on what happened to be spent for. We listed on what was going to be spent for, we spent money on tires.
Right.
And that money is going to be for gear if we don't get any, any other grant.
Right.
Gear's going to be $5,000 minimum for each--
Each of, right.
Each firefighter. So the town, I don't think has that kind of money. So that 77,000, or that 70,000 would be allowed for me to buy 10 sets of fire gear.
Well, now they're saying, they're, they're saying there's only 49,000 of that left. If we use that money for something else?
Might go back on them, I don't have the money, so I don't know.
Yeah, because we got, well, this says the fire tax expense. Is that, are you, so the 77,000 that we got, did we use some of that for something else?
For whatever he asked for, yes. It was for the gear, for the turnout gear, and--
It was five sets of gear in order, and tires for the firefighter.
So, so we spent about 25,000 of that already of the 77,000? Okay. I, I, I just, I don't know, I just don't, how can, we don't even know what the fund balance is going to be until after the audit is done. Is that correct?
Right.
The audit, it can't be adjusted in the audit.
Do I?
Yeah, the auditors sometimes, you know, find reasons to adjust that.
I understand.
This is what you have on, this is what your book shows.
Right. But, but, but all that could be changed, and my thing is, it's just, it's not, it's the first day of July. Why are we making these amendments now? And I know we're supposed to make things, but--
Well, technically, if it's not expended during last year's fiscal year, then it goes into the general fund.
Right.
And that's, it shouldn't be sitting in the general fund unidentified because it had a purpose, you know, like the McMichael funds were for the fire department.
Well, I understand that, but, and in the past, I think up until about two or three years ago, that's how it was set because I think a previous auditor had a previous finance director create these accounts so that the money would be there. And I guess my, my only question is, we knew when, when we did the budget or we knew close that these things were not, we had this money available. It's, it's, it just don't work. I guess, we just, you know what, I got four months left and do whatever you want to.
But when the ordinary question, if this was a civic club or something, you'd have an account, it'd be a fund, and you just leave it there. You know, if it was for a high school class or a unit, we'd just sit there from year to year. But in local government accounting, you know, you have to, you have to move it from one year to the other, but with an accounting entry. So that's what's happening. I don't know if that helps.
It don't help me, no.
Sorry.
I still don't agree.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
I believe we approve the budget amendments presented to us.
So I have a motion from Councilwoman Bennett, a second.
Second.
A second from Councilwoman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Would you have, one opposed, Farmer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is fire prevention inspection, and this will be with Mr. Sands.
So again, as kind of a carryover from items one and two, in the discussion that we had this, this morning with the Fire Marshal, she indicated that she felt like the town was moving forward with the, with the plan to do the fire inspections internally. However, she did indicate that it would probably, at minimum, a six-month process to get everything outlined and put in place for state requirements. And as a result of that, we would like to revisit the inter-local agreement that we had with the Fire Marshal's office prior to June 30th and simply extend that contract through the upcoming year so that we can ensure that our citizens have the fire inspections that are required by law and meet the requirements there. So that is, that is what the additional item's there for.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recognition of the town administration.
Yes, sir. So I have a motion from Councilwoman Farmer, a second from Councilwoman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All business, we have none. Public comments, DeLeah. DeLeah, do we have any?
Now we have a town administrator report.
So just a few items, we, council approved the water sewer rate increases. We have posted those on the website as well as the office. That went into effect today, and citizens will see that increase with the August billing. So that has been communicated. The schedule of fees also has been updated in both locations. We had, as you know, the slight increase in some of those fees, so we've made it, citizens are aware of that as well, as well as posting of the operational hours. One of the proposals that out there is a quarterly update. We're working towards something that will be live streamed or podcast so that our citizens can get updates, at minimum quarterly, maybe more frequent as, as things come around. So I just want to make you aware of that project that's ongoing. We've mentioned a couple times already tonight, the revitalization grant that we did receive from the state for the amount of $200,000, working towards revitalizing our Fidelity Bank Building. And so we are working towards that, and I appreciate the support that the council gave towards that grant moving forward. Upcoming events, we do have a senior bingo coming on July 10th, as mentioned, as well as the July 17 cruise in. Town Hall will be closed on July 4th in observance of our Independence Day. And then the final--
And then the final item that I have, Ms. Hutcherson sent out to all the council members, an opportunity that's coming up in October, which will be a strategic planning workshop for small towns. This would be on October 8th and 9th in Winston-Salem. We can have up to five individuals to attend. Two of them must be elected officials, and so we would love to be able to put together a team to go to this workshop, so that we can work towards a three- to five-year plan, updating what we currently have, some of the ideas that the council would like to see towards that. And so I have a copy of the announcement, again, for each one of you, if you'd like to have a copy of that. And so if you're interested in attending as a member of that team, please let Delea or myself know, so that we can all get you registered. It is a one-time registration for everyone, so whether we have three people or up to five people, we register all at one time.
Okay, thank you. Our next town council meeting will be on August 5th at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn for the night? I'm sorry.
I have one item, one question I have, it's right there. I don't know to you, Sands, or to Farthing.
My question is, coming from 220 into Stonewall, the Stonewall sign is beautiful. There's flowers, the grass stays cut. But if you're coming into Stonewall from Eaton, it's a different story. And my question is, who maintains that property around that sign?
Charles Rector. He owns the property, he maintains the sign.
So do you, any?
He responds to me, maintains it when coming up.
I'm asking, I don't know, I just.
I've never been direct to do.
I'm just.
You're talking about the one.
One right, right past the Holiness Church.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you turn on Sneed Road, that sign. The grass is high, there are no, it's just, it's not a pretty sight, and I was hoping somebody would be able to get whoever's responsible to maybe update how it looks.
Say your first item.
Thank you.
If I made the town's office put their both of those signs, I'd ask people, "Ma'am, since I've been here with Rector, I've been taking care of them, you know, a lot." I knew, I didn't know that we were supposed to be taking care of them. We've been doing it, well, I thought we've been doing it for about 10 years, now, White isn't for a quarter?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we, because I think the town was working with some volunteers to put those signs there, so.
Both of those in our ETJ?
Yes.
How far?
Thank you, Brian, thank you.
How far down do you move toward Eaton?
We usually stop at Jerry's, right? The intersection of Jerry and Main. We move down to the property line, roadside, and that, we usually don't go any further than that.
Okay. Carl, you're good, okay. Thank you, Councilwoman.
And council, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure, we did place, I think, in front of you a proposed budget amendment. Do we need to go ahead and try to take action on that to cover the fire inspection fee, since we've agreed to move forward with the interlocal? There would be, half of the funding that is there was already there for the fire inspections anyway, but we would have to amend in order for the additional 5,000 for the fee that the county was going to charge us?
So we included it with item number six.
Oh, you did, okay, so that's, okay.
Yes, I think we are.
Wanted to make sure.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So we.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Thornton, a second.
Sir.
Councilman Sheldon, all in favor.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.